Well, can our meeting started this evening? I'll let you all know I am under the weather. I've got this stomach thing that's going on. So, that's why I'm way over here. They're way over there. But we welcome those that are here. Hello. Hello. And the Business Council and our staff that is here. At this time, we'll have a invocation. And we'll get started with our meeting. Darryl, would you like to voice a prayer for us, please?
For where to join in with me? No, it is. We go out. Heavenly Father, thank for me blessed you bestowed upon us. Heavenly Father. Heavenly Father, bless each and every one of us who are gathered here tonight. Give us your guidance, Heavenly Father. Give us your wisdom, Heavenly Father. To make the right decisions to help our people move forward, Heavenly Father. Heavenly Father, ask you to be with all our relatives and friends down there in Texas and Florida. They're having a hard time, Heavenly Father. This you know, Heavenly Father. Great catastrophes down there of biblical form, crusading system. We ask you to forgive us for what we may have done, Heavenly Father. Ask you, bless each and every one of them. Be with those who have lost loved ones in this, these hurricanes, Heavenly Father. And be with all those first response there who are there who are trying to help those who need the help, Heavenly Father. Watch over, try and protect them, Heavenly Father. Bring them home safely, Heavenly Father. Our Oklahoma National Guard is there doing the best they can, Heavenly Father. And ask you, be with them, Heavenly Father. Heavenly Father, once again, I ask you, bless each and every one of us at the conclusion of today's meeting. Give us travel verses. And ask all this in Jesus' name, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Time to call the robe? We'll call.
President Pratt?
Here.
Darryl Longkamp?
Here.
Patricia McCray, here. Angela Thompson, here. Sammy Adson, here. Donna Hare, here. Charles Hightree?
Yes.
All right, we do have a quorum. So I declare a quorum. Move on down to item number three, approval of the agenda. Nothing to add here, track. We can entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I make the motion approved the agenda.
Motion is made by Patsy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Darryl. Call for the vote.
You have the vote, ma'am.
Yes.
Patricia McCray, yes. Angela Thompson, yes. Sammy Adson?
Yes.
Donna Hare, yes. Charles Hightree?
Yes.
Okay, the agenda is approved. We move on down to item number four. Approval of Pawnee Business Council minutes. PBC meeting minutes eight twenty-four seventeen. We can entertain a motion to accept the minutes for eight twenty-four seventeen.
I make the motion to approve the minutes from eight twenty-four seventeen.
Motion is made by Patsy. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Adana seconds. Call for the vote.
Darryl Longkamp?
Yes.
Patricia Fay, yes. Angela Thompson?
At stake, I was on here.
Sammy Adson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Charles Hightree?
Yes.
All right, the PBC meeting minutes eight twenty-four seventeen are approved. Move on down to item number five. Pawnee Business Council President's report. I don't have a report this evening. Wait till the next time. So we'll move on down to item number six. Pawnee Business Council Committee and travel reports. Is there any from the council? Any reports from council?
I do.
Okay.
I, yes. I chaired the Roma Committee meeting on January seventeen, where twenty applicants were approved. Had eight deceased members and two conditional relinquishments. And we are beginning to work on their Roma statute provisions. That's all I have.
Okay.
President Pratt?
Yes, ma'am.
I also have a report for the land use management committee.
Okay.
We had a meeting a week ago Thursday, and Darryl was going to try to pull it up since I failed to print it. I myself wanted to have my laptop down. So, we had our meeting, as you know, you were part of that. And one of the reasons why it was, there was a sense of urgency to it was because of the three hundred plus acres of land that are being donated or thought to be donated from Kansas. We wanted to strategize on what we needed, what our next step was. As to come find out, Andrew, my chief, was already up there. So I'll let him speak to that piece of it. I'm glad for that because we can't waste any time to, you know, to talk, to plan when we really need to be very reactive right now. I know that Don Mason as well has been in contact with an attorney up in Kansas that does this type of work. So he will also be reporting, I'm sure, with his next report to us. So that is, in a nutshell, what's going on with the Kansas donation. And I'll let Andrew speak to that when he has what he needs to do. As far as the other land use is going, everything is in work for our Mason pasture. But they are going to have a second burn, and that's going to be in October. And they're still cleaning it up. And because of all the rain, it's just, there's a lot of brush and a lot of everything growing back. So they're trying to get that land in prime, what's the word?
Condition.
Condition, thank you, to be able to bring that. We're still out there with it, but the work is still being done, which I really appreciate. Did you find it? That's, okay. Anyways, there was some other discussions as well. And I do apologize for not bringing that in and will be certain to add it to our next meeting discussion. We're going to have another meeting here in a couple weeks. So I'll report both of those at our next meeting. But that's the gist of it. If anybody's wondering what's going on with the Kansas donation. It's more than three hundred acres. I believe it's three hundred and eighty-five acres. And it's in work.
Okay.
Thank you.
Darryl, did you hear?
Well, Mr. President, I was notified recently that I'd be, I was asked if I could travel down to Bill Rock, Arkansas to attend a meeting sponsored by the Oklahoma National Guard and the Arkansas National Guard. What they want to do is have a government-to-government meeting with different tribes and our depot represent. But they tried to contact Michael Hightree. I guess you know that he's still on, employed in his new gun. So I will be going down there September twenty-fourth to the twenty-eighth. And they will be, pretty much, at that end, they're handling everything on the arrangements of housing and the deals and stuff. It's kind of interesting because I didn't know why, actually why they want to do it, but they wanted to meet with the various tribes. What they're going to do is they're going to take us to their archaeological sites there in Arkansas. A couple of places in, I think, Florida, going to those. Park is called Poltek National Park. What it is, is they have mounds, earth, earthen mounds there. Hundreds plus acres there. And archaeological studies have shown they, the name was a misnomer. It's a Mexican, the previous owner, back in eighteen something, thought they were built, the mounds were built by Mexicans. But with a study a few hundred years later, they found they were native tribes in the area that built those mounds. And so it's an ongoing study there. Can't recall what university it's at. But it's going to be an interesting event for us to go down and see what they've got to show us. So I'll be down there at the end of my work back.
Darryl, I think that's good that you're going. But you do have a typical veteran place, John Michael Sixey Love. And that's Matt Reed. So maybe he could go.
He's unable to attend.
Oh, is he?
He's at another meeting. So that's why somebody from the, was going. They actually, oh, they do all expenses, and they do it every two years. And I went, Darryl, Adrian, I went four years ago today.
Anybody else from CRD?
I don't know. I want to talk to them. I can't seem like we're in the country set up. So I approached them.
So, yeah, thank you. We have anything?
The only thing I have is Magic Committee and those items are all the agenda. But are we going to travel with us now?
Uh, in a minute. So, Charles?
No, I'm not.
I attended the enrollment committee that Patsy recorded on. She did a great job for her first time to chair. And we're excited about doing some revisions on the statute. We probably haven't been having a property meeting sometime in the near future. And Angela's been, you know, working on scheduling that. And they want to have a HR committee meeting next week. And we're looking to have all of them. So I think the staff have some reports to review. Thanks, Ma'am.
All right, thank you. All right, let's go on to item number seven, which is a travel request. Do I have any just for the, start right with the?
I have that, thank you.
I have none.
The only thing I have is I have two that are coming up in November. So I'd like to go ahead and get started with that because of the hotel cost.
There'll also be a VIA meeting coming up pretty quick. I think it's October, December. Everyone? Seven points?
We do a lot?
Not yet, I think, but they will.
I want to say that.
Yeah. Sam?
I have a job.
Darryl? Okay, what I have is, at the end of the month, I have been asked by the NIHV to go present on the pledge formulation along with the other two co-chairs. NIHV and Seven Point showed up for, are taking care of all the expenses of the trip. And so that'll be September, I believe, six twenty, mid, maybe twenty-eight. The other thing that I wanted to bring up was NCAI, it's next month. And it's an annual meeting. It's also the election of a new chair for two years. What's this thing I just blanked? The Lieutenant Governor for, King Gerson Field. Friends for the chairmanship of Oklahoma. I think he's been good. So I'm hoping to support him in that. But what we did is at the last conference meeting, we got approval for those who want to go and what Cindy did. Just like you said, on the rooms, we went ahead and got three rooms. Got all the host hotels around the one. So there's three rooms. I don't know if any of you would want to go, you know, or not. It's anyway.
I would recommend that whoever has voting privileges, if there's any individual, plus the organization that would attend this one, so they can vote whoever or Jefferson or support.
Yeah.
It's in Milwaukee. And the dates are the fifteenth through the nineteenth. Up to Milwaukee. So just let me know. If you're all scheduled, we'll do that. So at this time, we can accept a motion to approve travel.
Just one question, President Pratt. Does that NIHV take you out of our council meeting?
Well, I was going to bring that up. It might. It might.
That's fine, as long as you know that.
I know, and you all know. It might, if you do keep that on there. But if we moved it up, it obviously would be gone. So, yeah. So just letting you all know. Darryl, let me know. So we can accept the motion.
I'll wait for the motion.
Motion is made. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second, if I, same. Let's call for the vote.
Darryl Longkamp?
Yes.
Patricia Fay, yes. Angela Thompson, yes. Sammy Adson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Charles Hightree?
Yes.
All right, travel is approved. Move on down to item number eight. Thank you for your report.
Good evening, council. So a lot going on in the nation right now. We're preparing for the secretary's visit, which is the nineteenth. We hope that you all make it out to the celebration. It'll be good. We painted streets. Continue to make the campus presentable. Continue to make it better. We're getting ready for all that's identified, you know, kind of the agenda. The way it's gone the last week, we've had a meeting every week with secretaries advancing. And every week, it seemed like the agenda changed a little bit. But we think that the agenda we have now, if we're going to issue out after tomorrow's meeting with the advancing, will be the final set agenda. Right now, it looks like the secretaries might not spend four and a half hours with Pawnee, which is a long time, and it's really good. Do an hour at the DHCS where he's going to meet with my mission director and program managers. But programs are funded by the HHS. Then he's going to do a short interlude at the Indian Health Service Clinic to meet with some of the folks there for about a half hour. And he's going to finish up with Pawnees at the Brown House, where we will have cultural celebration, introductions, speeches, and a meal. And we're going to feed everybody. So we're all looking forward to it. It's all hands on deck for the staff. So we are preparing, so to speak. Since we had talked a little bit about the hurricanes, we did put it out with information on the website for people to contact our person manager if they've been affected by earthquakes. And so far, we've helped four. We've identified some issues that we've had and need to streamline, but it'll be better next time. We have a call out now to those who, travel members who may be affected by Hurricane Irma in Florida. And we do have travel members that live in Florida, just like we have travel members that live in affected areas in Houston and San Antonio. So our cycle will continue to function, and they'll continue to reach out. And when they do, we will help them any way we can. But again, it's, our response time needs to be tightened up a little bit. It mostly has to do with our person manager didn't know all the system yet. And our DHCS didn't really know all of the points of contact yet. So it's my job to make sure that everybody's communicating. So we're streamlining as we speak. I got a request from the Shalaco Alumni Association to help with the road to the cemetery in Shalaco. There's over a hundred burrows there at the cemetery, including some Pawnee folk. Right now, the road is really disrepaired. The whole campus south of, well, on our part, in the way where Shalaco Creek is and the old golf course is, has been washed out by Shalaco Creek. So the road makes it very difficult to get back there and then maintain the cemetery at the wall. The other difficulty is the cemetery is half on collie and half on Pawnee land, and the road is on Pawnee land. So I reached out to our Department of Education education manager, Chris McCray. He's getting in plan together, voting with the cause. And we're going to find a way to make that road more accessible to the alumni association so they can go out there and maintain the cemetery and mow and do all the things that they want to do out there. Have a lot of things going on. I'm sure you all, I mean, council asked about the land issue. The nexus of that was really, one of the chiefs was able to set the meeting, and the donors wanted to meet, and they wanted to talk. So I went up there and I met and talked over the donors. It's three hundred and sixty acres that they're talking about, including forty-two adult bison and twenty-four bison under a year old. So we're talking about sixty-six head. And they, we reached out also to a Kansas kind of title attorney and, you know, to kind of look at some things. Because we've never, we've kind of handled this before. We've done it kind of in a handshake type deal. And sometimes we get some donations, and sometimes we lose donations because of that. And so we wanted to solidify it. So my intent up there was to gauge the seriousness of the donors. They made it absolutely clear that they're hundred percent serious. They signed an agreement of principle, which is a non-binding document. And, but it really outlines their desire and what they want to do. It's important to note that their concern is not the land. Their concern is the bison. The reason why the land became an issue is the donor's dream was to return bison to Kansas. He did that. And he wants, he's worried about what happens to the bison after he passes on. And he wanted somebody to take care of the animals. They knew that the Pawnee wouldn't. These folks have been part of the Friends of the Pawnee, which is an organization that is a charitable organization that is set up to help support the Pawnee village museum there in the Republic of Kansas. So they've been heavily involved in the Friends Association, and they met and helped out the Pawnee folk to come visit as well. So they're no strangers to the Pawnee culture people. And so they knew that when they wanted to donate the bison, that that's who they wanted to give to. But they wanted the bison, some bison to remain in Kansas, and they realized that they couldn't do that, or couldn't guarantee that if they didn't also donate some land. So they wanted to donate some land. So came back with an agreement of principles, but now it just opens up a whole host of issues that we need to address in our land management committee meeting. Stuff that, you know, we really need to look at. We need to have a title exam done. So Don Mason has been in contact with the title attorney to start that process. See, actually, he gave us a quote about how much it costs to do an exhaustive one. Because we're willing to appraisal, we need to know the property tax rate. We need to know the abstract fees. We need to know the insurance cost. We need to know what kind of encumbrances may or may not be on the land, any easements or zoning encumbrances. We know that there's some easements that the Corps had put on the land, but they're in a specific area. We need to know how much it costs to maintain bison with the animals. And so we researched that. It's about six hundred and forty-one dollars a year for animal. But I'll get there, they go from fifteen hundred to one hundred a piece. So it's very doable. And we also got our hunters conservation plan today. It was a very good meeting with the UCAI folks there, the USDA. They put together this comprehensive conservation plan for our land here, what we call the big pasture. The good news is, is our last burn was able to remove a lot of the invasive species. We still have some, but we're going to burn it in October. Hopefully, we can continue to cycle the birds for the next couple of years. The blue stamp and the Indian brass and the other stuff, the native traditional brass that continue to come back. It looks beautiful up there. It looks like traditional pasture land already, but there's still some work to do. And the next step to that is fencing. Which reminds me about donors. They would also like somebody to go up to Kansas and learn how to manage the animal, which is something that we definitely, most definitely want to do. Which is also why we're having a meeting on the twenty-second of September to discuss a comprehensive agricultural plan that includes the creation of an agricultural division. Jane, Eve, and HL present their preliminary stuff, and then they'll invoice us or kind of like give us an idea of what their services will cost to provide a more detailed report. So we're moving headlong into the agricultural program. I guess it's a shortened suite of it. But it looks good. It looks really good. And we're going to continue, I'm going to continue to stay in contact with the donors. They're good folks, you know. I don't want to lose their interest or don't want them to think that we've lost interest as a nation as well. One of the concerns that we do have is that, pardon me. Kansas law has a corporate farm statute. Basically, they don't allow corporations to own farms in Kansas. And so one of the title attorneys concerns, what does the Pawnee Nation, are we a corporation? Or what? Short answer from what we found is, like everything, tribes are kind of in a gray area. So, but we hope we can resolve these issues. But these are things that are going to come up during the course of the continuation of the donation. So, anyway, any questions?
Andrew, I just, would you say that with all of this, all these exercises that you're going through, and such, this is all part of this strategic plan to develop an SOP around donations of land? What do we do? Who do we contact? We have you. So it would be great to document all of this.
And we are. Because that was what we had talked about last time. We had the last, like, who did these requests go to? Who made, is it just buddy to buddy? Do we continue to do that? Or do we, so, yes, we need to focus in on the definite best business practice about, so we know exactly what happens and what is triggered when somebody says, hey, we want to donate land, or hey, we want to donate bison or something.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Andrew, thank you for that report. On the bison, I guess, and I know this is very preliminary. My question is, who is currently taking care of the bison? And what is our plan for caring for them? Are they going to stay up in Nebraska? Or are we going to transfer them down here? And we're, but I don't know if we can handle that many, where we're looking at. So I just don't know, you know, I just, I don't know if that, if you all have thought about that or what the plan is on that. And we're taking over that land. And we're taking over that land, and I mean, I would like for all this to be in place, you know, I'm sure you know that. So I just, those are some preliminary questions I have.
And these are preliminary questions that I have as well, because what we need to do is have all this information to the council so when you guys can make a decision about whether you want to take the donation or not. I mean, it's a big responsibility when you're talking about 64, what it means, especially animals that are so important to us. With respect to our big pasture here, the NRCS feels that we can comfortably hold 32 adult animals here comfortably without having to do any extra feeding or anything, and just our land is sustaining a healthy 32 population. We have no immediate plans for moving any of the bison should we follow through the donation and get less to happen with the bison with us in the immediate future. I mean, this is a time that they, we're still, we're still on track for bison within about a year and a half, because we still have a lot of fencing to get done. And we don't have any donors trained to work with the animals. I mean, right now, the donor is the only one that works with the animals. And he could walk out the middle of them. I mean, it's, he's been doing it for a long time, I'll reiterate it, but we have to have somebody that goes up there, which means that we have to have a division or program in place to support that activity. And so that's why we're moving up to September 22nd to have this big comprehensive plan and talk about what we're going, what the future of agriculture activity is for the poni nation. Because those things have to be asked before we even consider bringing down animals here or consider doing anything with them. So yes, they are considered.
And of course, you know, I've expressed this to you before, that I think it's important that we get our Realty Department. I think that that program can be a subdivision of the Realty Department as well. And I know, you know, if we're going to develop those lands in Nebraska and other areas, that it will be a vital program that we have staff on board that has the expertise to handle those. And which you all are doing as well, some product policies, the standard operating procedures before we, you know, endure that stuff.
And that's why we have to sit down, well, I need to start formulating how exactly we want to do this, because, you know, if agriculture is going to be just ag, I mean, for a realty, I mean, depending on where the funding comes from, you know, the USDA has a lot more money than the BI has for realty functions. So we'll have to have all these conversations, because I'm not just going to send somebody up there and run out of bison without having any support back here, you know, besides making meat. That's not going to be good enough. We have to have a system in place here to support that.
Right. And the other thing that comes to mind, you know, we've had a request from other entities underneath the nation regarding agriculture. And it's going to be coming to the property committee as well. So I need to know, or the property committee needs to know, what's the plans and where we're going to put all this before we start delegating or giving away lots of the property or other ag programs. And maybe, I think it is that we coordinate together. I don't know what the solution is, but I think we need a whole strategic plan around that overall with all entities involved, who's looking into ag.
This is all going to support everything we do. We're very, we're very biased in that, it's not just going to be pretty animals, I mean, beautiful animals. It's still going to be the tie into our cultural division, tie into our poni division, the tie into our poni nation college. And all of these things have pieces that are locked and put together and they all have, you know, on the same page. So I think September 22nd is the start of that big process. This is going to be a lot of work.
So that's a call sign, maybe that you have on the 22nd, we're bringing in everybody or just?
Oh, yeah, it's council's invited. It's Jamie Hef, Rachel England, Stephen Bonk from the Intertrial Ag Council.
Could you please coordinate that with Mike Burge, just because I think the Board of Trustees is here that day as well.
That day? Okay.
My calendar says that.
Oh, great, thank you.
What? Board of Trustees meeting at 10:00 that day, and invited the campus planning divisions to show us, send you guys an invitation for this ag meeting.
I received that one.
Yeah. But that is the day of Board of Trustees meeting, that you guys come over at 10:00 AM on Friday.
On the, what's the date?
The 22nd.
Friday, 22nd.
22.
And the ag thing's going to be all day, and I'm sure the PNC part is going to not be all day. The ag thing's going to be an all-day thing, so.
Yes, sir. Question about the secretaries to visit. I know things haven't been finalized yet, but is there going to be just mostly presentations? Are there going to be Q and As or what, you know?
Right now, we have speeches lined up. The secretary's going to give a speech. President Crabb gave a short speech and then introduced, you know, everybody there. And then there's going to be a cultural celebration. I guess we're going to do it in the audience. I guess that's the plan initially. And then we're going to feed. Secretary has been, at least we've been told by his team, has never spent any significant time with the Native tribe at all. He went to, I want to say he went to Alaska recently when he first was included, but he didn't spend any kind of cultural time with the tribes in front of him. So this will be his first significant contact with a Native American tribe. So he kind of wanted to showcase all of that. So yeah, there's going to be speeches and there's going to be other tribal leader teams there from our service area. And we don't want to, we just want to contribute our service area. And so.
They're actually having a stack meeting the next two days in Towne, Oklahoma, for the area and, yes, tribal leaders. And so what's going to take place here is just for poni surgeon and the folks who still have shares in the PRC. And so, you know, our neighboring tribe are coming and, it looks good, we'll have a Ceder blessing, we started off and meet with, and I don't know if Andrew emphasized this, but he's going to meet with the Poni Business Council for 30 minutes. So, 30 minutes, 30 minutes there at the O IHS of the PRC. D H S, yeah, whatever the acronym is. But, and so he's supposed to meet personally with us and home to us for questions and comments.
We know what time that is.
Yeah, we do, because he said meet here at 12:30.
Oh, okay.
So what Andrew has alluded to was tomorrow, we have the final agenda. And as soon as we get it and they say, well, this is good, we'll send it out to you all and to the tribe.
But after, I have a doctor's appointment last time asking, so it's after noon?
Yes, afternoon. And we do have some other logistical things that we need to score up, because we still have to meet with the security team. So we don't know, the tribe, the tribe may be open but not open, if that makes sense. The employees may be here, but we may not be offering services just because the secretary of security gave them access to certain buildings. We don't know all of that yet. We don't know how he's coming in, we don't know what they're going to block off as such until, until we meet with their security team, which I think they said they come out usually a couple of days before the secretary does. So right now, our plan is to kind of have the nation in the quasi-closed state, the employees here, in case the secretary wants to visit with them, but maybe not providing services. And that's not even to all of it, too. We haven't identified which parts of the campus might be inaccessible to regular people driving through. So we'll have to take all that into consideration as well. Andrew.
I hope we have a specific agenda to meet with the secretary that, and I'm hoping that you're providing some input, because you're highly, you represent us and other areas in our region at the area level for IHS on budgeting and the issues that directly affect us at the local level and national level. And I hope that we're all apprised, meeting the council when we do meet with them, so that we understand the issues and the nature of what we're going, because this is a big deal to meet with the secretary of HHS. And we need to hit him hard with our issues here at home and what he can do to help us at our.
That's right. I will provide it.
Okay, great, thank you.
So are you talking about like a specific council agenda for that?
30 minutes.
For that purpose?
Yes.
Thanks, Andrew.
All right, thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Andrew. And there is a Attorney General report on the, can you just send that?
Okay.
Actually, yeah, okay. So, should go, Ann.
She went to get some.
Lance got a cake, you know, she'll put her at the end and she gets mad at us, so. We'll let her introduce her cake. I don't see her. So let's move on down to O Business.
Well, I can tell you it's pineapple upside down cake.
Oh. You don't have an accent, just today evening, I'm starving. Okay, O Business, number one is approval of Resolution 1750, Supreme Court Justice appointment. And so this evening, we have two. That's Kyle Haskins and Bob Buchanan as the candidates for Supreme Court justices.
President Pratt, we had our interviews last week, and I was the one who showed up. I had some questions that I presented to both candidates, but being there by myself, I feel like I don't want to say yea or nay about one or the other. It's just me that was there presenting the questions. And I, with the two, I have my preference after interviewing, I was talking with them. I feel that I should have been more over there to question the candidates instead of just myself. I said I have my preference to have them meet both of them, and I don't want to say that the appointed members of the council in agreement or whatever are questioning them. I hate to put this off any longer than, I mean, the appointment of this judge.
Here's the thing, is they have their annual meeting, I think it's the first Saturday in October. Yeah, or it's the first week, sometime in the first week, Supreme Court, the court justices come and conduct their annual meeting. And the Poni Business Council is always invited to attend that and meet the judges and stuff. And so what we're doing is we're running out of time. And this is the, what, third vote, right?
So the Allen's position.
Yeah. Suggestions?
Well, you know, I could just have taken the first two way back, and the first did the interviews, and then this last one as well. I'm ready to make it this out. I'm sorry that you were the only one, because that's kind of how we felt at the last one. And that's why we decided to go have another meeting. But, you know, I don't think we can put this off any longer. We've done interviews. I think this was, what did it, the third of all the time? Yes. And so I think it's necessary that we need to take action. I mean, you all have seen Art Romano here, you've seen the resumes. So I'm ready to take action. I don't know about everybody else.
All right. Let's go ahead and take action, and just go ahead and, did you have a little steps?
Yeah.
President Pratt, could you tell us who the two candidates are again, please?
The two candidates are Kyle Haskins and Bob Buchanan.
If I may, I would like to say something again. I voiced this at the last council meeting, you know, it wasn't the last one, it was a couple of times ago. I want each one of you who lives council to know that I oppose Bob Buchanan. He has been on this Supreme Court forever. And if you all have ever taken a look at our laws, there's misspellings in there, they're outdated, and he is a Supreme Court judge who had plenty of time to try to address them and make them better for our people. So I don't think he should be on there anymore. And the other thing is, I reiterated it the last time I spoke against him, is that he was asked to turn over some court funds at one time, a program that they had at the court, that should have been in the regular Poni Business Council tribal financial system. And it took him forever to turn that over. He almost threatened to do it, if he had a court order, he would do it. That is not good cooperation. My third objection is that he took at least, what, a year or two years to hear the Donna Hare case. And that put this whole council at odds because of the uncomfortableness of having a member of the council on this, seated on the council and acting as a council while she was suing the tribe. And he held that court case up for almost two years. Now, if anybody wants to question any of that, if you want to have questions for me, I am glad to answer it. But I'm telling you, as a tribal member, I oppose Bob Buchanan. So each one of you that vote for him, I hope you don't.
All right. Thank you. Go on, shoot. I have a question.
Go on, bring it, man.
Me.
Yes.
Each individual vote.
Yes.
Kyle Haskins, Kyle Haskins, Kyle Haskins, Bob Buchanan, Kyle Haskins, Kyle Haskins, Kyle Haskins.
Good, all right. So Kyle Haskins is the Supreme Court Justice for Poni Nation. Good.
Congratulations.
Right. Ann, will it just be?
Will it just be, pardon?
Oh, what?
If you need to pass the resolution back.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Sorry.
I made a motion to approve Resolution 1750 and 20, Kyle Haskins as the Supreme Court Justice appointee.
And we got a second. All those, Dr. Charles, turn around. Vote for the vote.
Carol Walton?
Yes.
Joshua Craig?
Yes.
Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Anthony?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Charles Nineteen?
Yes.
Kyle Haskins. And for the city. Now, Ann?
Yes.
Your cake?
I have pineapple upside down cake, $2 apiece. The money's going to the Poni Nation elders. Last time I was here, I made $32. And anytime you all ready for yours, as long as you have $2, I'll print it to the end. Thank you.
All right. This is going to item number 11, new business, number one, approval of Poni Nation Department of Transportation, Tribal Transportation Improvement Program modification, number one.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so this is a modification to our tip, will be presented federal highways. We're just moving some money around, adding to the state routes of school. Give me an update, we bid the project out twice, it's been over budgeted, you know, both times. We're over by about $44,000, what the grant is. So this modification is showing $50,000 to go to, I'll take seat that $50,000. Once this approved, we'll send federal highways for their stamp of approval. We'll do the contract, then come back to you guys to award the contract to be started. So all this is, again, shows up, remove $50,000 to each of this project, federal highway stands it. I'll come back to you with the contract, so.
So let me make sure I understand, this doesn't affect your tribal transportation budget, because it's all under that construction line item? You're just doing this with the inventory on that project to tribal transportation?
Yeah, yes, yeah, on the plan, we're just moving that a little bit, yeah. It has nothing to do with our budget. Again, we'll come to the budget committee. Yeah.
Okay, great. I make a motion to approve the Poni Nation Department of Tribal Transportation Improvement Program, law one.
Second. I have a motion, second, Dr. Charles. Vote for the vote.
All this is, again, shows that we moved fifty thousand dollars to this project, federal highway stands, but I'll come back to you with the contract, so.
So, let me make sure I understand, this doesn't affect your, your tribal transportation budget, because it's all under, under that construction line item? You're just doing this with the inventory on that project to tribal transportation?
Yeah, yeah, yes, yeah, on the plan, we're just moving that a little bit, yeah.
It has nothing to do with our budget, again, we'll come to the budget committee.
When I ask?
Yeah.
Okay, great. I make a motion to approve, um, the Pawnee Nation Department of Tr- Tribal Transportation Improvement Program, law one.
Second? I have a motion, second, for Dr. Charles, talk for the vote.
Carol Walken?
Yes.
Trish McCray, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Anderson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Charles Nineteen?
Yes.
Alright, let's move to item number two, approval of Resolution seventeen fifty-six, provisions to the Pawnee Nation Area Policy. These should be tabled, so, let's, uh.
So, move.
Alright, motion is made?
Second.
And a second by Dr. Charles, almost in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Be opposed, no? So, we have tabled, um, item number two. Item number three, uh, Budget Committee recommendations, and we'll let Angela have these.
Okay, um, the I H S Housekeeping and Grounds Maintenance received a modification, um, for an increase of the amount of nine thousand six hundred ninety-one dollars, making their total contract amount three hundred and thirty-six thousand four hundred and eighty-four dollars. They're putting this in their supply line item, and Budget Committee approved, and I make that motion to approve.
Motion is made, is there a second? Charles, second, call for the vote. Call for the vote.
Carol Walken?
Yes.
Trish McCray, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Anderson, because Donna Hare?
Yes.
Charles Nineteen?
Yes.
Okay, Housekeeping Budget Law number one is approved, we move to twenty seventeen Employee Club Budget Request.
This is a, um, budget request to include a budget for the Employee Committee, the Employee Club, in the amount of two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, so that they can expend money for their activities, and Budget Committee approves this budget, and I make that motion.
Motion is made, second.
Hoffman?
Donna, seconds. Call for the vote.
Carol Walken?
Yes.
Trish McCray, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Anderson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Charles Nineteen?
Yes.
Alright, Employee Club Budget Request is approved, we move to item number C, twenty seventeen C H R Budget Law number three.
This is a budget mod including thirty-six hundred dollars, they move money around, they receive thirty-six hundred dollars and make a total budget of, uh, a hundred and ninety-five thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars for their C H R contract. And Budget Committee recommends approval, and I'll make that motion.
Motion is made, is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Charles, seconds. Call for the vote.
Carol Walken?
Yes.
Trish McCray, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Anderson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Charles Nineteen?
Yes.
Alright, uh, C H R Budget Law number three is approved, we move to item number D, Approval of Twenty Seventeen F D P I R Budget Law number one.
Food distribution requested additional end-of-the-year money, in the amount of twenty-five thousand seven hundred and seventy, to purchase some new equipment, and it was awarded, it does not require a tribal match, that was waived, so they're including this amount, uh, increasing their total award to two hundred and thirty-three thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Budget Committee approved and makes that, uh, motion to approve.
That's good, so you make your motion?
Yes.
Alright, is there a second?
Second.
Daryl, seconds, call for the vote.
Daryl Walken?
Yes.
Trish McCray, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Anderson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Charles Nineteen?
Yes.
Okay, food distribution, uh, Budget Law number one is approved, so we move to item number four, which is discussion and/or action on young dog dance, on my seat.
Good evening, council. I, uh, I wanted to come here this evening, uh, first of all, to thank the council for the opportunity that I had in open forum to address the council in regards to our, uh, young dog dance ceremony, which is soon to take place. And, at that time, uh, what I wanted to do was open the door for council to participate if they wanted to. If I remember, I don't recall that, when most of you ran for your different positions, you indicated that you would be willing to assist in any way that you can to support our, our culture and, uh, other activities that we have, so, uh, that is one of the reasons that I opened this up for council. And, a lot of times, you know, uh, I find it, uh, to be, I find it interesting to know that, you know, with, with a lot of, of our different ceremonies and different things that we do, that a lot of times we want to assist, we want to help, but a lot of times we don't know how. So, uh, anyway, uh, I didn't make mention that, uh, there were some things that possibly, uh, on a personal basis or as council, maybe there are some ways here that you can help with this ceremony. And, uh, by the way, this ceremony is gonna be held, well, tentatively, on October the fifteenth. So, um, we needed, uh, uh, what we found is, uh, what we'd be needing is quarter bodies of all things. So, with that being said, uh, uh, on a personal basis, I think a couple of our council people offered to do that. I believe, uh, there was two of these quarter bodies taken care of, and I want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart for, for just that, that action that you took on, on a personal basis. And, uh, we, we're actually looking at four, but hopefully, you know, uh, there will be some other ways that we can, uh, assist in, uh, maybe taking care of some of those costs. And, as you know, uh, most generally, uh, to feed at one of these ceremonies, it usually runs around, uh, a hundred and fifty pounds of beef, to two hundred pounds of beef, and fifty pounds, two hundred pounds of pork, and the corn. And, uh, I think, uh, some of the council as well have offered to donate corn. And, uh, I think some of the chiefs has offered to do this as well. So, uh, we're looking forward to all these donations, and again, uh, if you should desire to go ahead and donate, either as council or, uh, personally, if you would, uh, please let Cindy know, and I'll be working with her in this regard. Charles?
Are you done? I don't want to cut you short.
Sorry?
Do you want to cut you short, are you okay? You don't want to cut you short, can I ask you a couple of questions? Can't hear?
I can't hear.
So, I don't want to cut you short, are you still talking?
Yeah. No, 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 I'm, I'm through, I'm through. I'm done. I said.
So, you, how much do you think this is gonna cost?
Uh.
Less than a thousand, five hundred, three hundred?
I think probably around somewhere between the area of, right around a lot of dollars.
Over a thousand?
For food and, you know, so on and so forth, but, uh.
And donation?
A lot of people have donated, you know, for that, for those costs as well, so, um.
So, it's not all just money, some people have already donated?
Yes, yes, some has to, to, yeah, and, and, and we're still getting donations, so. It's, like I said, it's really appreciated, uh, trying to, uh, ready the area as best as possible for the dance itself, and to make sure, you know, it's comfortable for everyone. So, we're looking forward to that, and, uh, as I indicated, I, I just wanted to come, and I know a lot of times, I know in the past when I said to the council, I didn't hear a lot of, "Thank you very much." But, I'm gonna come to you and tell you this evening, thank you for all that you've done, and, uh, I, uh, I appreciate very much as council. I look at it moving ahead and, uh, I just, uh, again, uh, real good, I feel real good, so, again, I thank you.
I have a question for the council, since I'm new to the council, this is something that's been done in the past? Helping with dances and such?
Well, yeah, I mean, the elders have come in and told different, different areas, yeah.
Awesome, aren't they getting the four hundred?
This came to Budget Committee, and, um, um, I believe the balance of it was referred to the donation committee?
Yeah.
Yeah, and so I don't know what the outcome of that. Okay, okay. So, I, I don't know what the outcome of that is yet, so, um, I know what you said to, uh, the four hundred bodies, so I don't know. I think that at that point in time, it was determined that four hundred dollars was the need, and which was referred to the donation committee, so, that's how.
Okay, so, as we said before, culture sets you apart from, from generic, and so, yeah, it's, it's been done before, would there be any issues with providing any kind of support?
I, I, I was talking to Cindy, and, uh, she indicated that, uh, there, there was a program, uh, for donations, uh, I think, uh, Tiffany handles that. So, I'll be going over there to, to take care of that, and, uh, hopefully we'll, uh, you know, be able to use that donation there. So, we're looking forward to that.
So, at some point you'll be able to come up before them and say, "We're, we're three hundred short," or something like that, right?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Alright, uh, thank you, Ron, for the information. The two council people's only request that we break in those two quarter bodies before anybody else.
Yeah, one quarter body.
One wanting a ribbon cutting.
It is, uh, open forum time, if you want to take a break, uh, is there anyone here for open forum?
Take the break. I mean, open, open the doors.
Because, because, okay, they just want to continue on with open, yes, my speech, my, I just don't feel good. See, that, that Daryl finished out, so, Daryl, finish out, I mean, appreciate you. So, sorry, I'm going home.
Hurry up, you're quick, hurry.
Feel better, President?
My kids.
Well, I just wanted to say that, uh, that we'll be going up north here pretty soon to pick up, out of the three acre garden for our blue corn. And, uh, we're, we're doing a sign-up list now and kind of finalizing that next week. And it'll be on the weekend, so, Saturday is a, uh, election. And there's gonna be a few people that'll come over and vote, and then take off from there to head up north, uh, to pick from Pleasant Dale's, uh, Farmer Dale, his, his, uh, three acre crop that he's grown out for us. That's a lot of corn right away, and, um, so, I'm, I'm sure Andrew's, uh, he still has some hair on his head. So, he, he's not pulling it all out yet, uh, but we're trying to figure out, you know, some details, but, once we get it back. But, uh, anyway, uh, you're welcome to come up, it should be fun.
Seven thousand seven hundred pounds of corn. So, I haven't sort of pulled my hair out yet, and so, uh, it's a lot of horn.
Donna Hare says she's going. That's good. Thank you.
Anyone else, uh, have they not sent you a statement, open forum? Okay, we're open for adjournment.
I make that motion.
Second.
Voice was made by, uh, Angela, and sent in by, uh, my chief. All in favor, yes.
Yes.
Opposed?